All right, folks. Welcome to the November 10th City of Port Angeles Council meeting. Can we call, um, votes? Mayor Brook, present.
Deputy Mayor Dexter, here. House Member French, here. House Member King, here. House Member Gavin, here. House Member Warren, here. House Member Sharon Warren. Mayor Joe West, present.
Attorney Moore, here.
And then I'm with the Councilwoman Warren has asked to be excused, so can I have my motion for that, please?
I have the exception.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion is yeah.
Aye.
A vote? Yes. All right. So let's have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, folks. It is time for the public comment. So anybody in the office who would like to speak or any others to the council, please step forward and just state your name and whether you live in the city or not. And we're going to get the list real quick here. All right, we got a couple of folks here. Attorney Advisor Counsel Devon Graywolf. Come on.
Hi. So we don't have to say our address just as residents of Port Angeles. That's much better. Yeah. My name is Devon Graywolf. I'm a member of the Tree Advisory Council. The acronym for Tree Advisory Council is T-A-C, which spelled backwards is CATS, which is perfect because cats love trees. And we have selected the Giant Sequoia Mines Park to be our city's first heritage tree in honor of President Lincoln. And it's because in was 1863, in the heart of the Civil War, that President Abraham Lincoln met with California conservationists who had a petition to save some giant sequoia near Yosemite that were threatened with extinction from logging. Lincoln sensed that big trees were a relevation of the uniqueness of the republic and a symbol that transcended Civil War differences. On July 1863, he signed a bill which granted the sequoias to the state of California. He wrote, "For the benefit of, for all people, for their resort and recreation, to hold the trees inalienable." He gave them analienable rights for all time. And this bill is a legal cornerstone for the creation of national parks, which you all know Theodore Roosevelt built on immensely. And so the legal meaning of analienable is that which cannot be bought, sold, or transferred from one individual to another. The personal rights to life and liberty guaranteed by the United States Constitution are inalienable. Coabba, lia, erina, potas. That's the Latin for inalienable. Is secured by law, unable to be bought, unable to be disposed of, and untouchable. Our sequoia tree, Mines Park, is entitled to thealienable rights to life. She is in a public park, and she belongs to the people. I have some more petitions for you. I did review all the emails and letters over the past year that went between city council and Cory Nathan and Margie. And what was really missing, except for Elizabeth Dunn, environmental lawyer that was protecting the tree, is any public. There was a, you know, there was no public notice or involvement. So that's what these petitions are about. And the Latin word petition means per. So each of these signatures that we worked hard to get references another as per.
Thank you.
And I did want to say Abraham Lincoln created Thanksgiving Day as a national holiday, not for gorging, but to celebrate our freedom after Gottesberg.
Thank you so much. Lead course.
Hello. My name is Lydia Kors. I'm from Chicago, Illinois, but I have made Port Angeles my home for the last three years. I am a hardworking and productive citizen, and I have a secret. Life is a test, and we are all the subjects. So I implore you to hear me out and save our sequoia tree. In April, President Donald Trump issued an executive order calling for the review of all national monument designations occurring after January 1st of 1996, where the monument exceeds 100,000 acres. The Giant Sequoia National Monument is now officially under review, and the sequoias are in jeopardy. After the, even after 150-year history of public effort to save the world's most superlative forests. And this is why saving our one sequoia tree that I named Hope is so very crucial. Hope is truly a miracle because this tree is not native to Washington State. Hope gives a home to our endangered bees and various other wildlife. I feel instead of cutting it down, we should memorialize it and protect hope. I believe it could be a beautiful staple for not only the neighborhood, but Port Angeles as well. I have a suggestion. Instead of cutting down the tree, it could be decorated by the whole neighborhood during Christmas time. Maybe others could bring trinkets of their loved ones they had lost, or even just pray for and put that on the tree. I feel this would bring people of Port Angeles peace, happiness, and hope. The answer to saving the sequoia is a resounding yes by all the Port Angeles citizens I have spoke to about saving our precious sequoia. In conclusion, I ask, please don't take our hope away. Thank you.
Next on the list is Rex Robinson. Robinson? Rex?
I put my name on the wrong paper.
There we go. Jasmine Hunt?
Hello, my name is Jasmine Hunt. I live at Port Three Eight Lopez, Port Angeles. Of the people, by the people, informed people. This axiom is supposed to illustrate the concept of fair government. We all want hope of a bright future with reasonableness and fairness. We are all guaranteed the right to life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. Yet, the right to a clean environment has been stolen by our current car culture and those that promote earth-damaging technologies. The current lawsuit, Juliana versus the United States, is a group of young people suing the government over not being protected from climate change that will infringe on their right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. It is hard to care about something when you know you may have it taken from you, that your hopes might be dashed. When I go out to our cherry tree and look east, I see the sequoia tree in Mines Park between us and the new housing development. I don't want to face the depression that may occur if the city cuts it down. Our friend Elizabeth Dunn, who started petition, had purchased a house close to the tree and the park when she learned that a neighbor wanted to have the tree removed. After the city decided to have the tree taken out, she moved to a new location to escape the injury she was certain of feeling. She now rents that house that she purchased. Brian Kelly, who owns the house next to the tree, 541 Whitby Avenue, told me earlier today that when he bought the house, he asked if he could cut the roots that were affecting his house. He said he was told by Cory Delacott that if the tree died after he cut the roots, he could be sued. Now we are hearing that the tree needs to be removed to keep the city from being sued for the damage those roots might cause to his house. What has changed? Port Angeles has much to be proud of. Designated a military reserve by President Abraham Lincoln, Port Angeles is a wonderful place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Helbrun.
Hello. My name is Susan Helbrun, and I don't live in the city. I just have a center that's in the city. So I want you to remember, we're having the Candy Cane Christmas Gala. I know you guys have a planning meeting, but you can always send funding. So I did go to meetings today. There was a homeless task force meeting that met with Kevin Benderwig and Mike Chapman, and I sat with the city mental health one and the board, border health. There's a lot of stuff out there, a lot of issues with the homeless. So I still want you to remember, our homeless need trash cans, they need needle receptacles at the blood stops, they need porta potties for them to use. I am still giving out lots of underwear because they have to use that for toilet paper. About the bell, I've got a guy who's willing to clean it up all the time for $10 a week, actually $10 for food cart. So, and he did tell me that they used to be able to plug in their phones there and charge their phones, but something happened and somebody turned the electricity off. So now they're going to have to go down to the pier, which then will hang around more downtown, which is probably not what you want this time of year when they're doing the ice skating rink. So that might not have been a good thing. We're still got anti-wholes out there. I heard from a director of one of the agencies that people are putting on hats and going out with bats. So they're still going after their camps, they're still causing a lot of trouble. And we really need to talk about a policy, a real policy that says Port Angeles doesn't tolerate that behavior. We really, really need to. If somebody thinks they're doing okay by trashing somebody else's lives, that's not okay. It's really not okay. And we guys, we got to figure it out. Thank you.
Steve Hopkins.
Good evening. I'm Steve Hopkins. I'm a resident in the city and the operations and planning manager for Clough Transit. I wanted to report to the board that Clough Transit had its highest ridership month in three years during October 2018, with a 12% increase in ridership over the previous year, and including a 50% increase in ridership on our Straight Shot service to Amherst Island. So we're really pleased with that. And what's most important to us is that we're pleased to be increasingly an important part of the community. And the more people who are making use of our services, the more important we are to the community. One way that we're doing this is earlier this month, about 300 seventh graders at Stevens Middle School all participated in a short transit education program and all received a free transit pass that's good through the end of 2019. And that gets transit in more and more homes in our community. It pairs up also very well with the free seventh grade YMCA program, so that transportation wasn't an issue to get to the Y. It gives kids a chance to do that. This weekend, on Friday and Saturday, we're offering our full regular service. It's a great way for people to go shopping, to go dining downtown without worrying about any sort of parking. And on Saturday, Clough Transit is also going to participate in the holiday tree riding event on Saturday night. So we're pleased to be part of that as well.
Thank you for that update. Appreciate it. And the last person on the list I have is Margie Morgendien.
Hello. I'm Margie Morgendien, and I live in Skun, but I own a couple of properties here in Port Angeles. And I would just like to thank Cory Delacott and the city of Port Angeles, Mayor, and council members for everything, for the patience in the sequoia tree and matter that's become quite a to-do, really. My downpour has become basically impossible, which is actually an easement to my home. And a fire truck wouldn't be able to get down there to my tenants. I've got two homes there. The aid car wouldn't be able to come down there. I can't drive down there. My easement's been blocked. Once, there was a car blocking that was actually the neighbor who wanted to cut the tree roots, because they're all going under his home. And this is the biggest thing, why I haven't prepared my driveway any further. I've prepared it three times, and there's a permanent leak. And the city has given me refunds for my tenants, and the tenants just carry on paying the city this water. And there's a permanent drought in the middle of summer, there's a permanent pool. And so the tree's roots have damaged the driveway to the point where they're standing out of the ground in some areas this high. And nobody can access my home. And that's actually unlawful. And we've been talking for 11 years to try and solve the issue without cutting down the tree. And we've had, the city has had numerous arborists come and have a look, and the tree is actually split near the top. And it's become dangerous to people. And if I were to repair my driveway, this is going to damage those roots. And the roots could, the tree could fall down on that house of the gentleman who actually wanted to cut the trees in the first place, the roots of the tree. So it's just an unreasonable situation for the tree to remain. And I planted over 100 trees on my acreage myself, so I do have trees. So besides the leak and my driveway being blocked, and that's a danger to the tenants and the danger to anybody walking their dogs and their tree's roots. And if anybody sort of studies that tree, if they don't know much about it, they'll notice that those roots could really go right underneath. Quite a few of those are the houses. So all I can foresee is some lawsuits, perhaps coming from those people.
You have your three minutes. Bye.
Thank you, council.
All right. Yeah. Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak to the council?
Hello, City Council Mayor. My name is Jeffrey Guley. I live in the city, Pio Boxman 71. This has to be had for me being a veteran. So I am a veteran, I'm a disabled veteran. When I look at this bell and what has happened to it and what is going on there, there are issues that are bigger than this. And as a veteran, as we know, we do the bell ringing every end of the last Friday of the month. And that's when the power gets turned on, because that's what it's for. It's for we're to have just where they can plug in their speakers and different things like that to do it. It's not a place to be hung around and sat and slept underneath. It is a monument to the lives that have been lost that we will respect. And I know that they respect it. There's some people that do and some people that don't. But as a veteran, I will let you know, I have been around, I've watched everything that goes on, I've talked to people down there, and I told them not to please advocate to do things like that around there. And they just tell me to blow myself off. So I'm letting you know, not all of them are like that, but some are. So and for anything that they have, I do apologize if they are unhappy about it. But like I said, as a veteran, I'm here to support the bell and be here to make sure that our veterans are getting the respect that they need when we do our last Friday of the month, bell ring. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would love to speak to the council during this? Since you already spoke, anyone still being there, just real quick? We have another comment at the very end. Anybody speak? Is there anybody else who has not had a chance to speak? All right. So we're seeing none, we're going to move on to the lead items. But at the very end of the lead, there is also a second public comment period. Lead items. Do you have any lead items to add?
Mayor, we do have two lead items. One is an application, a collaboration settlement agreement. The second item, you do have a letter to the governor in your diocese in support of the Minnesota College Project.
We do?
Yeah.
Actually, I do, but I don't really shoot yet. And that's to, I mean, the settlement under other considerations?
Correct.
Five and six for the government, yeah. So council, any lead items from council? All right. So let's move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that need to be called out from the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, let me read the consent agenda. The city council begins on September 4th and October 2nd and October 16th, 2018. Expenditure report from October 27th, 2018, and November 9th, 2018, in the amount of We invited our overflow building project, CON 2018-38, award contract, end of stage two water declaration. And the last one is PA hardware reimbursement from city to insurance companies. Any discussion?
I have the consent agenda, sir.
All right. With that, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Always in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you. So we are, let's do the 6:30 here, but let's see if we can take a couple of these things.
Mayor, I'm going to suggest we could probably move forward with a brief version of a presentation for the Longville area.
Okay. Let's do that then.
Good evening, council. Sorry, it's a broken brief intermission here. The city is a member of the Western Holiday Agency Group, which is known as WAPE, of banking under Washington Consumer Home Utilities. WAPE represents the industry with its members and its political angle in the Bonneville Power way exceeds $18 million. WAPE provides some documentation for the transmission of your mayor. And Red King, who is our power resources manager, will be discussing with that electric utilities. Okay?
Okay. Thank you. And Red King, the power resource manager, is going to talk a little bit about a settlement agreement that was brought to us by the Bonneville Power Administration. So Bonneville Power has sent us a request for all transmission customers, or 314 transmission customers in the Bonneville area, including Port Angeles, to execute and return their transmission settlement agreement. By no later than November 30th, this is Bonneville's timeline. Deagle has reviewed and satisfied with the settlement, and staff would recommend that the settlement be settled. Little background, so the city's electric utilities buy all their wholesale electric power from the Bonneville Power Administration using two contracts. The first one is the power sales agreement. This is where we actually purchase the power. The second one, the one that doesn't get as noticed, is the network integration transmission service. And this is the one we're going to talk a little bit more about. This is the one that tells how the city actually receives its power. The settlement agreement is actually going to be an amendment to the transmission service agreement. The settlement affects all electric utilities in the BPA service territories, as I said earlier, is 314 other transmission customers. That territory that territory covers Washington, Oregon, Idaho, parts of Montana, Utah, and the rest. So what is the settlement? In a nutshell, the settlement does about three things. First of all, BPA is no longer going to be required to go to the federal energy regulatory commission, FERC commission, for any changes. Secondly, it is going to set up a new rate-making process. Both these are good things. For the FERC thing, it's going to be good because it's going to mean that Bonneville does not have to go through the time and expense of going to FERC, the delay, I should say, and expense, going to FERC for getting approvals. This streamlines the process and makes it more robust, makes BPA more nimble for the rate-making. We're going to talk about that in another slide, but again, in a nutshell, it's going to bring some conformity to the rate-making process. Again, a good thing for the city and the people here. And finally, it's going to provide transmission rates for fiscal year 2020 and '21. Since BPA is on the financial calendar, that means it's going to be from October 1st, 2019, through September 30th, 2021. And again, this is a good thing. It's going to, it's given the city ample time to be able to plan for those rates. So let's talk for a bit about this rate, how the Bonneville goes through the rates. So right now, there's two different methodologies. The first one is the one that we all know and love from our years here in the city. It's called the power rate case, and it involves basically BPA performing analysis, they have their public hearings, they go through negotiations, and finally, they issue a record decision. That's not necessarily the case with the transmission. Yes, they'll go through and do their planning, but then they have to go to FERC. And as we can see here, FERC is not really a nimble and quick organization. They are very slow in making determinations. So what BPA is planning on doing here is making the transmissions more like the rate case. So again, a little more uniformity. It's going to also go through the analysis, it's going to also go through their public hearings, going to go through and make their negotiations, and then make their record decision. So again, a good thing for the city to hold it all in there. As I said earlier, we got 2020, '21 transmission rates. When BPA had first come and started negotiating for the settlement, they were proposing a 9.6% rate increase. After they've done with negotiating with the city and the city's representation through WAPE, working with other utilities, they finally settle on a 2.5% rate increase. This is a 7.1% decrease. I think really a good win for the city and the people here that make it up. I included a little bit of a factoid in there so we can kind of see what kind of amounts we're kind of talking about. So transmission takes up 11%, and you can see that equates in 2017 to just about $1.3 million out of a $12 million dollar increase. So in summary, we have a settlement agreement that we need to try to follow BPA's timeline, November 30th. And again, going through three things. It makes it so that BPA does not necessarily have to go to FERC for approval, it's streamlining the rate-making process, and it's getting us the $20 million period of rates. All good, good things. So we're asking the city council to authorize the city manager to sign the BPA transmission settlement agreement, minor modifications as needed. Questions?
Can council questions?
I just want to start off by pointing out the rush to have a sign this agreement so that we can start on the agreement for October 2019. Talking about moving slowly, that's nice. So back to the act of math, it looks like you're talking about roughly a $30,000 increase for a year-long period.
For a two-year.
For a two-year period, yes. So that's a fairly minimal impact on our utility rate difference.
I would say so, yes.
Any other questions?
Could you explain to me quickly what FERC does?
Could you explain to me quickly what FERC does? Just regulates.
It, well, yeah, so it does a couple of things. The main way that the city, our electric utility is impacted is it works primarily to make the power, to make electric always there, it being very dependable, so they have a bunch of standards for that. But as you can also see, it also goes through and regulates these regional organizations, Tennessee Valley, for example, power group, they regulate them. Bonneville Power falls into that same category.
So, I guess, follow up on that. So I think FERC is really the oversight, right?
That's right.
And in one of your slides, you said in there that there's one, that they had not gotten their approval for the last 15 years. And I would be really curious as to why, and an oversight body, they're not seeing that they really need to get approval. Then it makes me wonder, why not?
My basic understanding, and again, we'd have to probably get someone who's a veteran lawyer than myself to jump in on this. But my basic understanding is that Bonneville, in addition to having some very standard products that it sells for power, also has some non-standard items that they sell. And it's these non-standard items that causes FERC to hesitate.
And I know that, okay, and again, that's another red flag for me, is like, okay, if we're trying to standardize things so that it makes it more efficient for everybody and more reliable for everyone, that's the reason for the oversight. So having somebody use non-standard stuff, it's not always the sort of bad thing, but it's not necessarily always a good thing. So how do we know, I guess, now that they're putting the oversight?
Right. So I think that the main answer to that is, Bonneville does not have to go to FERC to get approval for, you know, the power sales. It's only on this transmission side. So I would say, so far, BPA has been very successful in providing a good, reliable service to the power. It makes sense to me to go ahead and standardize them, the same type of service and process with the transmission.
Okay. Yeah, and the other thing that I guess caught my eye was that our agreements were for long term and now they're going to be for much shorter terms?
No. So let me, let me go back and explain that. So the agreements are going to stand, they're still going to be for long term. What's changing is having these rate periods. So we're already familiar on the power side that we go every two years through a rate process. What they're trying to do is still bring that in on the transmission side. So they'll still go through these two-year rate processes. They just want to have them on both the power and the transmission.
Okay. I guess maybe it's not so clear in my head. So the rate rises that are going to happen, would they have happened in the same way before as they're going to happen now?
There will be changes over time, so they move the transmission so it's more like the power rate cases.
Right, so I guess before, did we see increases every two years?
Um, no.
And so we probably didn't see rate increases for a long term, and then we saw a jump. Is that how it used to be?
You know, I have to go back and take a look and see how that worked out. But definitely on the last, I went back and took a look at the last two years, we didn't see a rate increase on the transmission side.
Okay, and I guess the reason for my concern is that I do know that some of one of those transmission lines are not necessarily up to par, but I understand that they're really old infrastructure. So is this a way for Bonneville to put on its customers to upgrade its infrastructure? And I'm not sure, you know, I guess that's what that's for.
So, great. These questions may be better addressed to the transmission side. Surely you can approach it better. And maybe some more additional questions in regards to transmission maintenance and reliability, and so forth.
Could it be Madam Mayor and Council? I heard all those questions. So first of all, BPA was not required when its open access transmission tariff was adopted by FERC, which is the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, which looks after the entire United States, different jurisdictions, each portion of the West, Pacific Northwest, including all those transmission tariff balancing protocols, what they call them. BPA adopted the order 88, irrespective whether they were not required to, and they stuck to it because they were getting something called a recipe policy status, which is a good thing. But then as BPA has gone forward and they've tried to adjust and adapt the Pacific Northwest and the four regions of their territory, they are not able to do that. Because if it is not valid or affecting the same way as it affects the entire country, FERC is dismissing it because it's not across the board. And that's something that has made BPA to take that stance, that because we are not required to provide these open access transmission tariffs to you, we are no longer going to do that because it's not affecting or it's not effective in our case. The other thing is, for BPA conventionally has been extremely conservative in their approach towards transmission, and that conservation has brought into effect by this open access tariff from FERC, which is more generalized. And so there are more concrete approaches that are included in that. What that means is whenever there's a new load that's coming inside the BPA territory, BPA is not able to give them that transmission capacity, even though it's available. But for FERC, it's not available. Physically, it's available, it's not. And that's limiting not just BPA, but City of Port Angeles as well, because potentially those who are going to locate in our utility service territory are frequently finding that transmission is the biggest limiting factor. So what this transmission overhaul is going to do is, yes, you are right, it is going to take into effect that this capacity that we call transmission, which has not been updated for so long, because they were not able to reach tariffs and take care of their dwindling transmission system. They are going to do that, but they are going to offset those costs. They are not going to pass those costs on to us and get to that why they would do that. They are not going to pass those costs to us because now they will have these aggressive products, there are about seven new priority products that have been defined, which they will provide to these new customers and get revenue of that. So existing capacity will be divided amongst more customers, more revenue coming in. At the same time, there will be additional risk that we will be taking, but they are going to negate it by using newer technologies and upgrading their system. So eventually, in the long run, it is a good decision. Transmission capacities are planned over 100 years, and for the long run, it would be a good decision, because as I said, capacity would be dispersed more efficiently. And why we would not allow it to happen, so we would not take on the blunt of the cost for creating a new transmission system, is because now there's a rate case period allowing us to have a rate case period. We have a say. Until now, we did not, we just did not, and we said, FERC will have a say in this process. So we will make sure that the negotiation, analysis, we'll ask questions, pertinent questions to BPA, and if a rate case or a rate increase does not apply to us, which is not caused by our service territory, we'll make sure that we do not get that rate, this catch-up to us. That's staff's responsibility, and we do take on that responsibility.
Thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate that, because I know that that was, those were red flags for me, so I appreciate that. Any questions from council?
So I'd like to add also a little bit, this is a little bit about UAC, but do you have a timeframe, do you have a chance to get to UAC in the future, would you take something like this to, for a little, so you want, but, and then, right, you should also, this is a pretty complicated situation, because these type of contracts, so how do you move up your vendors, any, any questions is, is great, thank you.
Thank you. All right, council, what can you do?
Can I just ask two questions to make sure that I understand? So, you have two concerns that I think our mayor kind of brought up, was one about oversight. So my understanding is now the oversight is really being given by the customers.
Yes.
Because they have a voice in that negotiation.
Correct.
Okay. And the second one is, you know, this is a settlement, which means the customers get something and BPA gets something. So BPA is getting the rate increase process that they have some amount of control over, that they didn't really before, because, is that correct?
It's more than that. BPA would get, would get to adopt a less conservative methodology, that would free up additional capacity on its system. BPA would get more flexibility, more nimbleness.
So they're also getting the new capacity, kind of, the new opportunities for more red catch-up.
Correct. All right, council, any further discussion? So, I need a motion.
I am going to be approving, authorize the city manager to sign the BPA transmission settlement and make minor modifications as needed.
Second.
All right, we got a motion on table and a second. Any further discussion?
I just think it's important to remember that we are going to have a conversation about COSA and Digan's utilities a little bit more in the spring, so it's good to have this information now and be able to consider that when we get them.
Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Okay, it is now past 6:30, so let's go back to the public hearing. Property tax levy for 2018. We will conduct the public hearing, conduct the second reading.
Madam Mayor and Council, as you recall at our last meeting, we did have a detailed presentation on this year's levy, sorry, property tax levy. The proposal was 41% levy in property tax, which would result in additional $45,500 in revenue to the city of Port Angeles. As ordered at the last meeting, we did make one minor modification to the ordinance, so we need some language that was recommended by the district office. Tonight is the second reading of the ordinance, and we are asking council to go ahead and open the public hearing. Following the public hearing, we're recommending that council adopt the ordinance.
Thank you. All right, let us open up this public hearing on the property tax levy. So anybody in the audience who would like to speak to council regarding the property tax levy for 2018, please step up and speak to us. Seeing none, stepping up for the public, over this, over 30 minutes, the ordinance. And it's an ordinance of the city of Port Angeles, Washington, levying a regular and lower property taxes for collection in this quarter 2019, and directing the city clerk to certify said amount to the Board of Calum County Commissioners. I guess seeing none, we'll close the public hearing here, and start council. Is there any questions from council? All right, seeing none.
I just have a quick comment, because I heard a constituent just, is sort of a, I do think this is a, it's a nominal amount, it's not a lot, the cost of doing business for the city continues to go up, and this certainly isn't even keeping up with the rate of inflation. And I think it's just important to remember, I don't want to hingera anything on this conversation in the spring, but as we think long-term, that it was brought up again today, that one of the fastest-growing homeless population is single women between the ages of 60 and 80. And so while it's not a lot of money for a lot of people, it is an additional expense for some people that just continues to push toward things being really challenging. So I think we have a lot of programs in the city for, you know, help with electricity rates and things like that, or with your utility bills. And so I think it would be nice to think about how we might be able to do a little bit more education about that to support people as we continue to make these small rate increases to allow the city to operate effectively.
Any other comments? All right, council, what, how do we move forward?
I move that we adopt the ordinance levy in 2018 property tax for collection in 2019.
Second. We have a motion on the table and a second. Any further discussion?
I appreciate that we have staff that has created good sound financial policies so that we can have sustainable budgets that are fundamentally conservative, and I think this is part of that, so I will be supporting this motion.
All right, seeing none more comments. We've got a motion on the table and a second. So all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. Our second public hearing is the 2018 budget. So over the, I'm going to conduct the first reading, and this will also be continued December 4th.
And Madam Mayor and Council, tonight we will have a quick presentation on our 2018 budget. Staff is very happy to present to you a balanced budget for 2013. This is the first reading of that budget document. I just wanted to highlight again for council, some of the important goals and items that really went into the thought process in putting together the 2018 budget. I think one of the priorities as communicated by council was to make sure that we're balancing that budget without the elimination of any additional core services or programs, recognizing we have already stretched those services so thin at the city, and that we're really wanting to protect those and continue those programs and services moving forward. I think too, it was extremely important to staff that we look at focusing needs versus wants, making sure that we're recognizing that many of our taxpayers, our ratepayers are not beyond the limits, that their income level is support, and it's very important that we're respectful of that, that we do with regular diligence in looking at the budget, making sure that our expenditures are expenditures that are absolutely necessary moving forward. I think too, it was important that we looked at specifically those expenditures that may come back if, for example, we needed to make some cuts to expenditures, we wanted to make sure those weren't just going to come back to haunt us the next year with large dollar amounts. Looking at the sustainable picture for one-time revenues as well is extremely important. But ultimately, I am very appreciative of senior staff, the effort that they made to take a very conservative approach to the budget, but equally appreciative and so proud of Serena and her staff in finance for their competence, their diligence, and their hard work to put this budget package together and ensure that it's balanced up at the end of the day, with that ultimate approach of Serena.
Thank you, Kim. Good evening, council. Today, before the public hearing, we're just going to briefly go over some of the highlights in 2019 budget, including how we balanced and just some of the items that are approved of financial severance. So just looking at the budget, we've started the process in May with recommendations from staff, and the budget was developed around council policies and direction. So all of this was patched together, and we've provided a preliminary document to council, it's posted on our website on October 12th. And since then, we've had several briefings, public hearings, presentations of our budget, the first being the budget resources presentation that occurred on October 16th, as well as the budget workshop that occurred October 23rd, and the first and second briefing on the property tax levy for collection in 2019. And so because of that, I'm just going to be going over the highlights and some of the changes that you're going to see in the 2018 budget. So first off, we worked really hard to make sure we kept our rates affordable. So the 2018 budget includes a less than 1% increase overall per utility rate. We've continued our claim investment by including a 2% cost of living increase. We've also been able to increase the Penn Comm fund with two communication officers for 91 dispatch. And we've restructured some areas in our personnel, first being in our IT department, we moved directors' management into IT, it was absorbed, and we were able to create an IT manager position that resulted in savings. And we were also able to restructure the street speaker position to move it into store morgue utility because of the requirement by the fund for that position. So that also resulted in some savings. We're seeing 2018 new and increasing revenues, and so we're seeing increased taxes across the board. We have some new revenues in the medical one department that allowed us to reduce the amount of the transfer from the general funds. And we also were able to get some new revenue from the Penn Comm in the course of the city and the county negotiating and working together to reduce the administrative fees that ultimately resulted in us being able to increase those communication officer positions. So in 2019, we're also focusing on maintaining and building our city infrastructure. Within the 2019 budget, we have $10.5 million for capital projects. So all this was accomplished with council direction, including our financial policies that include the property tax increase of 1% that you just passed tonight. We also have the maintenance of a 25% general fund balance. In 2019, the project budget is 25.5%. We use a cost of service analysis to determine our rates. We focused on community enhancements. And in 2019, we have no use of street reserves, but for the last few years, we've been using 300,000 or more to balance the street fund operationally. And in 2019, we do not project any reserves being used. So since the preliminary document, we've had some changes from preliminary to the final version that resulted in citywide revenues decreasing by $493,300. We also saw the expenses decrease by $675,700. This is primarily a result of council per recommendations from the lodging tax committee. We also saw some updates that were received after the preliminary document was finalized. So, those are in three funds, first being housing rehabilitation, we received a grant for the women's school in the amount of $750,000, that included revenues and any expenditures. And second is the Harbor Minute Fund, we received information from our consultants, so if you recall, in the preliminary, we could carry forward the 2018 budget, so we just made those updates and affect those revenues and expenditures. And then third is our self-insurance, we had the addition of the LOA facility for insurance there. And we also had some areas in our departments where we hadn't carried them over self-insurance, so we just corrected that as well. These changes are also included with your budget memo in more detail exactly how much those amounts were and what lines and funds that they affected. So I'm just briefly going to go over the highlights for what's changing in the 2019 budget. So statewide, our budget is balanced at $152,411,900. And within that, we're going to see changes in revenues, we're going to see increases in taxes across the board, including general fund and a special revenue fund, including lodging tax and real estate excise tax funds. We're also going to see an increase for building permits and for new construction. Within the revenues, we're going to see a decrease for conservation incentives and grants, and we're going to see an increase for electric consumption primarily resulting from the start of date of the mill. We're also going to see a decrease for equipment services, because we're expecting a decrease in our replacements for 2019 as well. And we're going to see some changes for capital contributions and transfers. Just looking at the categories, you can see citywide, the largest source of revenues is charges for business services, and so I've broken that down, so you can see primarily that it's made up of utilities of electric being our largest source there. The second largest form of revenues within citywide, or taxes, the largest source is property tax, all by utility and sales tax. Citywide, looking at our expenditures, we're going to see that change for the cost of living increase of the 2%. We're also going to see an increase for power purchase, again for the start of the mill, and a decrease in conservation incentives and maybe fees for our LOA issue, as well as changes for transfers and capital, decreases for equipment replacements. And finally, in inter-funds payments for services, you'll see the decrease for the street positions that we moved in the store water facility. So just looking at that by category, citywide, the largest form of expenditures is other services and charges, and so I've broken that down, the biggest form of other services is professional services, that 26% within that category. In there, we have taxes, allocation, and medical and benefit premiums that make up the second largest. Within citywide funds, personnel benefits, salaries, and wages make up the second largest source of expenditures, and that's 23.75% if you combine those together. The largest is our intergovernmental and inter-fund services, these are transfers to other funds. Primarily, you'll see that with capital, about 60% of just that category on expenditures. So just briefly looking at the general fund and some of the highlights there, you can see that the general fund is balanced without the use of reserves at $20,7600, and there again, we are projecting the fund balance to be 25.5%. Within the general fund, you'll see the increase in taxes on the revenues, we'll also have some increases for new construction for permits, and you'll see the changes for civic field improvements that occurred in 2018 that we don't anticipate will happen in 18. And so looking at the general funds, you can see it's a lot different from citywide, taxes make up the majority of the revenue within the general fund at 65.86%. Charges for given services make up 25%, and of that, 88.36% are inter-fund charges, basically these are things that other funds do for another fund, we call them allocations, and so we charge for those services. If you take those allocations and the taxes and you combine them together, they make up 88.2% of all the general fund revenues. Looking at the expenditures in the general fund, you'll see that increase again for the cost of living increase, and you'll also see the decrease for equipment replacements, as well as decreases for IT services as a result of the restructuring. Just looking at expenditures graphically, you can see that in those categories for salaries and wages and personnel benefits, if you combine those, you make up 64.8% of all the general fund expenditures related to personnel. The second largest form of expenditures lies in other services and charges, and there again, professional and contract services, and that's 22% of that is the largest source. And then, intergovernmental, those are transfers, the largest transfer that we have in the general fund is for street funds, we also have the contract for deal services, and the medic one transfer, as well as some for capital and debt service. So just to summarize, since the city is financially strong, we've been able to increase our revenues that resulted in a decrease of dependency on a single revenue source. We have healthy fund balances, we've continued to reinvest in capital projects, infrastructure, personnel, and the environment, and the ability of residents and businesses to pay is of highest importance when we're going through the budget process, and that's supposed to be helpful and with staff. And so with that, before the public hearing, I'm going to be able to answer any questions that counsel have regarding the 2018 budget.
Counsel, any questions? I just want to say thank you for that budget book, it was actually, I ended up reading cover to cover, and I was very grateful, it was very straightforward. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, so, seeing, I guess, no more questions here, we'll open it to the public. If anybody in the audience would like to come speak about the budget, counsel, now sitting, please state your name and whether you live in the city or not.
Good evening. My name is Tony DiBrazio, I live in Port Angeles. I have a question I'd like to ask, does this budget include funding for a code enforcement officer?
Madam Mayor, I wish I'd be more than happy to answer that question, I know typically we don't like to get in the question and answer session in public hearings, but I think this is an important one, because we know it is so important to our community. We hear daily that community members would very much like to see more investment in the compliance. My commitment to the city council has been that before the end of the year, I would bring forward some revenue options to the city council that are identified as revenue options that we could implement, that could fully fund a code enforcement, basically program, if you will. And it would likely be a program implemented within the police department, it is something that we recognize as the highest priority, and it's something that we're willing to diligently on, we want to make sure when we bring those items forward, there are items that council will feel comfortable with, we want to make sure that they can be sustained in the long-term, and not just one-time revenue sources. So we want to make sure we go right, and we appreciate the continued patience, but that is our goal, to get some revenue sources that we can depend on for the long-term to ensure this very important community issue is taken care of.
Okay, so, but to answer his question, so not yet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to address the counsel upon this issue?
Evening, counsel, my name is Mike Corry, live at 6-7 South E. I think this is either the fifth or sixth year I've come for the council, asking you to get busy on a climate action plan. Hopefully there's something in the budget to help in that area. And I'd say, based upon the part of the BPA presentation, issue presentation I heard, I hope you've all read the Calhoun County PUD report, 21, 22 pages, when they withdrew from the planning council, so it was some dire financial news from about BPA's finances, including transmission. And then about six weeks later, the administrator from BPA, L. H. Meyer, had a report, a response, basically saying that's true, and then he laid out some complications. So, one of course was wind and solar in California coming on very strong, so California, it won't be requiring wheel power to come down there during the peak of the heating season or the peak of the cooling season, so that's going to be lost revenue going into the future. And his response also got into other areas that I just hope you read about financially, that's definitely coming our way, rate increases. The climate action plan, Governor Enslie's executive orders still in effect, so I don't know what your capital projects are, but if you go to the board, Hollywood's trust fund, RCO, you know, clean water funds, you're going to get the question, what are you doing as far as making a climate action plan for your community? And that will weigh in the decision who gets the money in those funds. One of the strategies I hope you look at is electric vehicles, and hopefully preparing to have an application when the Volkswagen settlement comes out on the street, I forget the name of the guy, who's, Nathan probably, there was a couple of DOE employees shepherding that process now, and it was supposed to be on the street already, but the governor stated that he favors using the full 15% that's allowed in federal settlement for electric vehicle charging stations. As you know, the BMW money, put a couple of charges in Lake Crescent, Solbeck, Claylock, and Quinault, so we have a good start to a loop of charging stations around the peninsula. Several of the casino tribes that I've talked to have charging stations, or they're waiting to see what happens with this distribution, because there's a third part of the fund that's a carve-out for tribes to apply for, and they may leverage some of that money to get some of the additional funds from the state pot. So I'm hoping you're working on that, help tourism, help residents in this area, let the private city police, county police, also the home average homeowner to have electric vehicles. Thanks.
Great, we're saying it's a county's report? Calhoun County?
Calhoun County PUD, it's probably four months old now, but when they withdrew from the planning council, they issued a report saying why they're withdrawing, and they knew they're responsible for their past liabilities as a member of the council, like RPD, I assume Port Angeles Utility is in it. They wanted to cut their future liabilities. That's what they were trying to do, is say, you know, we're guilty, we participated in a lot of these bad decisions in the past, but we ought to be responsible going into the future, so we're going to put that on our great peers.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else in the audience who would like to speak to us about the 2018 budget? All right, seeing none, let me read the ordinance. An ordinance of the city of Port Angeles, Washington, Florida. An ordinance of the city of Port Angeles, Washington, adopting the 2019 budget for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2019. So I guess with this one, we will move it on to, we'll continue this to the December Let's move on to other considerations. So meeting on election night, I felt that we should have a discussion on this one, especially since we were able to not go to, to not have a council meeting for a baseball game, it seems like election day was a little bit more important. So, I don't know, may the county want to speak to all this, or is this just going to be a council discussion?
So counsel, I know this is a very important issue to city council, I heard from a number of you, as well as we had a consensus of council last week requesting this UO for the session for the future meeting. I think there's a number of options that could be taken place. Generally, we do have an ordinance in place that satisfies the council to have the ability to reschedule meetings necessary. Generally, that's in association with a public holiday, but certainly the council would have the courage to go ahead and decide now that they do not want to have future regular council meetings scheduled on a night of election. And I think it might be worth discussing whether we want to do that for every election night in November, or whether we want to do that just for larger election nights. If there's any decision the council chooses to make, another point of distinction would typically be, do you want to move that to a Monday or a Wednesday for the future? And another option too, could be that you could ratify this in ordinance if you so chose.
Counsel, any thoughts?
Just to help you understand, remember, I don't think we canceled the council meeting because of the All-Star game, we moved it to Wednesday. And my suggestion would be that on election night, we move the council meeting to Wednesday, and that would occur just once a year, and it would be very predictable. I don't think we need to codify it in ordinance form, but I think we probably could all agree that once a year on election night, we move the council meeting to Wednesday, as we did with the All-Star game, which was a special event for our community, but we did not cancel the council meeting.
Okay, any comments?
I would agree with Mr. Moran, just, especially for Wednesday, so the staff has time without a weekend and then Monday. But I don't, that's something we can just change every October, is that something we have to put in?
You certainly could do that on an annual basis, just at the meeting prior to the upcoming election night, or you can do it in advance. It's really something that, if you want to make a motion tonight, we can certainly track it as staff members, and then when it comes up next year, we'll be prepared to make sure that we give the appropriate notice out to reschedule meetings to follow Wednesday.
I prefer just to do it every year, is my opinion.
I concur. I concur, Wednesday would work for all of us. Monday doesn't give us time as council to really do our council work. That extra day for staff and for us would be quite productive. And election night is exciting and interesting for all of us, and we, you know, our minds aren't really here, we're, our minds are really at the courthouse and what's happening, so I just, I think once a year to move it to Wednesday would really work.
I would agree with that, and I like the idea of Wednesday also, because particularly if we happen to have council members who are running again, Monday night is going to be a very important night potentially, and so not having to come to a council meeting that night, but wait, I think would be nice. And I agree with other people's rationale for Wednesdays as well. I wouldn't mind asking, you know, making a motion tonight to, at least for next year, because we're talking about it right now, go ahead and change it, but I don't have a strong feeling either way.
I agree, and I think, you know, the other part to all this is the public, and I think the public, you know, is also probably interested in more so an election sometimes than regular council meeting, and, you know, I think, if we go on Wednesday, actually, there might be a lot of civic pride and excitement after an election, that people might want to just come and see that city council meeting. So, I support going on Wednesdays, and I would, I actually think that it would probably best to do it in ordinance, so that it's just set, codified, and not have to maintain it every year, and future councils have it.
I would agree with it. I would like to actually see it put down on paper, agree to, and then it just becomes a matter of course, because having to do it every year seems kind of silly, especially we all agree that this is important, so let's just do it, let's just do it from now on. So I really, a motion on this one.
And Madam Mayor, I do want to mention that on some occasions, I don't think it's going to happen very frequently, but on some occasions, you may have a conflict where moving it to Wednesday, a step on planning commission, just want to make sure council is aware of that.
Okay, yeah. And I guess during those times, then we can move it to a different date, but if the conflict is not occurring, then we should go.
Does it make sense to reword the ordinance and bring that back to a council meeting, or can we just make a motion tonight that we want to change it?
My recommendation would be simply direct staff to draft an ordinance and bring it back to council, reflecting the modification to move those meetings to Wednesday.
I agree, I just want to add that media also needs to be at the courthouse, and though our council meeting is very important, they have to run over there at eight o'clock, so we might as well join everybody at the courthouse.
So, so do we have an agreement that we want a direct staff to go ahead and get those orders?
Yes.
Okay, I see that. You said you got the first one. All right, the next item on list is the council office space. All right, the next item on list is the council office spaces discussion. Do you want to start from this one, or do you want to start from this one?
Madam Mayor, I'd be more than happy to start. I think the question has come up whether or not there is an opportunity for council office space within City Hall. And I think that it's really important to share with council right now, under general policy, just like any city staff member, council members do have the opportunity to book any of our city meeting rooms or conference spaces. And ideally, if you want to set an out appointment, or if you want to book that specifically with Sherri Curran in the city manager's office, I want to make sure that you are aware that those are options for you, just as they are for any city employee. I think it's important to highlight too, though, in council has adopted a security policy. Security has become an important issue within City Hall, and that security policy generally would suggest that when we have external meetings, particularly those that are on the fringes of working hours, that we look first and foremost to the burn burner meeting rooms, recognizing that if we do have external visitors coming into the interior of City Hall, we do require visitor passes, and we need to get those sort of through Sherri Curran. Staff this year did make some space available in the council chambers, in the meeting room. We recognize that that is not the most adequate space in the world, but we do want to be a company of council, but we also want council to know that there's a number of options for you today, and we want you to feel welcome in the spaces that we already have in existence.
So who would like to chime in first, please?
I appreciate staff accommodating councils, they always have. And we are citizen council, we have jobs, we have businesses, we have a monthly stipend to help us with our expenses, but we're not full-time council members. Now, we do know, if you want an office and a phone, we can run for county commission, state representative, there are many places where you can run for office and have those amenities, but our, we, at the council here, we have, as has been stated, several meeting rooms available. And the last few years, we have set council priorities, we have had funding issues and even crisis in the last few years, and we set our funding priorities so that we are very careful with taxpayer money. And just tonight, it was brought up again, that we do desperately need money for code enforcement, so I'm a little embarrassed that we're even talking about spending money to, for new accommodations for council, when we already have satisfactory setup. And I just, I know some of us want, may want to spend more time at City Hall than others, but, you know, we work out of our home and we come to council to set policy. We really have, none of us have regular administrative duties here. So to me, the need for an office seems a little, a little too much to ask at this time, because that would take space away from staff, and it would add some cost. And I just really don't want to add any additional cost. And I do, I have looked up specifically about administrative duties, and we're a, we're a city manager, council form of government. Now, many cities, for instance, I'll just use Seattle, where they people directly elect a mayor. Here, we're all council members, and we, we appoint a mayor to do, preside for ceremonial purposes and preside of meetings. But the state law says, RCW 35.18.200 says, he or she shall have no regular administrative duties. And that's, that, and many RCWs, the state law of the state of Washington says that council, our mayor and council members have, shall have no regular administrative duties. We really don't need to come to the office here at City Hall. We, when we need to meet, we have our conference rooms, we have ability to do that. But I think under the circumstances, we need to talk about needs versus wants, and frankly, we just raised our water rates five and a half percent. That means anytime someone flushes the toilet, or gives their children a bath, that there is a 5% increase. And tonight, we did raise property taxes 1%. We have to be so careful how we spend the taxpayers' money, and adding additional perks for council at this time, I'm really not in favor of it. Thank you.
Anybody else like to chime in on that one?
I might. I basically agree with councilman, council person, council fellow council person. Basically, firstly, I don't really feel the need for an office at City Hall. I have a fine home office. As a matter of fact, years, years ago when I was running my company, I moved my office space to a home office because of more efficiency and less transportation. Now, I was traveling to Jack County, Seattle, and that was problematic, but all my reference materials, all my books and so forth are in my office, and I certainly don't want to transport those to an office here. And second of all, I don't see the need to conduct appointments personally here in City Hall. I find it more invigorating, if you will, and more informative to have informal meetings with constituents, or having a cup of coffee, or going to the senior center and such, because I think you get more done when there's not a desk between you. And so, as Nathan pointed out, there are, there's at least four conference rooms in this building alone. So if we wanted to meet with staff, there is plenty of conference space there. If we want to meet with public, because of safety and security reasons, the burn burden is really the more functional place to be. Again, as Sherri pointed out, we don't have administrative functions, we're not here to push papers around and do that type of stuff. So there's no real computer work for us to be doing here. If somebody calls any hall and is looking for us, we all have the same phone under, so there's no need for a telephone directory. I certainly don't want to be under steps, you know, in their way or underfoot. And so I feel that if I'm walking around City Hall trying to find my office, I'm going to be bumping into them more often than I probably should be. Again, we just raised property taxes, we raised utility rates, and we don't have the money right now for a code enforcement officer. I don't think the optics are very good for us to be looking to avail ourselves of office space when there's so much other needs, such as a code enforcement officer, to be put in place before we spend some money on ourselves. So I don't think that's a very, very good way of presenting the budget, if you will, to the public. We attend, we all attended the Association of Washington Cities Boot Camp, and as Sherri said, there's several RCWs that talk about the distinction between a city manager, council form of government, and that's what we are. And if, when we went to our retreat, we were given, as part of the retreat package, the AWC background information on the role of council, in council managers forms of government and so forth. And then reading that clearly states that we do not have an administrator, and it's really against the law for us to be involved in any type of administrative activity and getting in the way of, of staff work. And I feel that the urge would be there if we had an office in this building to get in the way of staff work, and I think that's a danger. So, again, just to summarize, I don't feel the need for it, I don't see the need to spend any money on it, and I certainly don't want to get any staff's way, because I don't want to put bricks all over my back.
All right. Anybody else who would like to chime in on this one?
I appreciated the reminder that conference rooms are available for us to use if we need them. And I feel like, you know, if I'm going to meet with another council member, I don't mind meeting in a hotel space, it doesn't need to be nice, just to have a quiet place to meet. And so I guess, I hope you have what's available right now. I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other, but I definitely, I only feel like what we have right now is ad wood. And, and as I said, I appreciated the reminder that we can use conference rooms if we need to, or want to.
Anybody else like to chime in on this one?
So I'll chime in on this one, this is one of the requests that I made, because it's stunning me that when I took over as mayor, I didn't get a single piece of paper from our previous mayor. I had no contacts from, the contacts from the previous mayor, I had none of his notes, none, nothing. And I, and the reason it struck me that way is because I was leaving my, my previous employment, and I was putting together the papers and the things from the pre, you know, for the next person, so that someone can carry on well, so that they can understand where things are, and where things could go to as they are sent. But instead, I said, there was nothing, no infrastructure was in place. And then I did by myself, always meeting people at coffee shops, and it's loud and it's not bad. And yes, having to go ahead and sign out a room is there, but you do have to sign it out, and then by the time, it's not immediate, no guarantee, yes, you go ahead and use it. Where if we have a space, now that we have that little space there, at least that's immediate. Now, one of the other things is, you know, we had the rare admiral come to visit. I was not allowed to put him in the closet, and that was just not appropriate. It didn't seem appropriate for me to go in, you know, have a meeting with the rare admiral in the closet. So we had him in a conference room, and he was actually very surprised. You don't have an office? No, I don't have an office, you know, none of us do. Now SWIM has an office for council, you know, Port Townsend has an office for council, and it's not, what I'm, is what I'm asking, is not something that's, you know, the Taj Hall, a little closet with a table, two chairs, a phone, to be able to call out, potentially, and a computer would only be as a server space, or a space to get into it. So I'm also in charge of being able to put agendas together. You know, the agenda that we see today is part of something that I am supposed to be on top of. I don't get to even look at this unless it's given to me, because I have no access to it in the draft. And that does not seem like a way to do things, not today. In the past, yes, everything was under the P. We're in a digital world. If we want to make changes, you know, easily email the city clerk, say, hey, can you change these things? And I'm saying, or can you add this to the agenda of February? So that that way, things can get done in a way. So access to the server to me was really important. Any kind of document that I need, I need to go and ask the city clerk, or the manager, or, you know, our secretary, to be able to see them. Now, if I wanted to search for the last couple of proclamations, I have to go through a very cumbersome search criteria to be able to get to the, if I can remember what agenda it was on, what date, and then search that way. But there's a file out, there are already proclamations. Do I have access to it? No. Should council members have access to that? Yeah. I mean, everything is available to you back then. We are all responsible adults. These are, these are city documents that I feel like we need. So I don't think it's, we're not asking for, for a lot. This city used to have a council chamber, a council office. Could you give some of the history on that?
Yeah, you have to. I did look into that, and I also called some previous city managers to find out what the circumstances were. If you look at the original plans for City Hall, one of the things that took place in the room, just me and I just over here, it was labeled in those plans as a caucus room. And as I mentioned, it was a space where frequently council would meet for executive session, the city manager would have many of his meetings throughout the day in there, but it was still a part of the city manager's office. It wasn't a space specifically dedicated to city council, but certainly city council used it quite a bit. But it was very similar to a conference room, but not necessarily an office space, and I think there was an important distinction.
Okay, and that would be fine to have space. We, we are given reports, we are given books, we are given things for us to read, and it seems that it makes sense that that's where they would go. I just went to Victoria, the mayor there just gave me a little pin for November 17th. And I'm thinking, that's, you know, where does this live? Right, that pin, that the next mayor, and the mayors from here on end, with a history that should live somewhere, that is council stuff. So like I said, I'm not asking for a dedicated office for me, and something that is considered a huge expense. I'm content with a closet over here, and that size is just fine. If it's a little quieter, it'd be even better, because there's a continual humming that happens in there. But it just seems that we need, as I said, SWIM has got their own office, or council have their own office, it's not, I don't think it's asking a lot to just have an office that every council member can get in there to meet other people with, that is, that works with security. This one actually works with security, so people are not on the inside necessarily, right?
Correct.
So, and then that, you see, so it's, let's say, it can work for us for the meeting rooms as well. And as to the, like I said, to the computer work, I do believe that we, I mean, like I said, as everybody gets more and more computers, I do believe that we need big computer access to everyone.
So I feel like those are two different, pretty distinctly different conversations. I mean, a computer in an office is one part of the conversation, access to documents is a different one. And I feel like having access to documents that you can edit feels like we're crossing a very administrative line. And while I recognize that as mayor, you can affect the agenda and should be able to see it in advance, I think my understanding of the process is even with the, with the city manager, it all goes through the city clerk, as I think it should. So I think having access to it electronically from a view only standpoint could make sense, but I do think having access, I would feel uncomfortable having access to beyond a certain, like if you're doing a public records request as a public member, you're getting a hard copy or an email copy, and it's, it's a PDF or something that you're not going to edit and leave it in the server where someone's going to print it out and go, oh, I didn't realize that someone had made those changes. And I'm not suggesting that we would go and monkey around with stuff, but I think it just opens up the potential for something mistakenly being edited or affected. So a view only standpoint might make sense to me, and again, I feel like those are kind of, it's fine to have both of those conversations, but I think those are kind of two distinct conversations.
That's a very valid point, if they bring over the next floor.
And I guess, like the rear admiral, I understand, I did not realize that other councils locally had offices. And I think that's fine, and I don't disagree with the rationale you have for wanting an office, and I'm not, I wonder if it's clear to everyone who doesn't, when we, when they're surprised we don't have an office, that we aren't for full time, that we don't work here, for, you know. Anyway, so, again, I don't have a real strong opinion either way on council office space, but, and this space works for council meetings, I mean, a couple people meeting from council, or I can appreciate not wanting to bring another sort of dignitary to meet there.
Anybody else want to chime in?
So first off, does this mean I can reserve Nathan's office? That's good. You know, I'm torn on this, because I, I personally don't think that this is a conversation that we should spend a lot of time on. I think there's other things on the agenda that I'd love to spend some good time on. I appreciate that there's an equity issue here, in that I also have an office downtown that I can use, other people don't, and I want to make sure that whoever gets elected to council has a good amount of resources to do an effective job. So that's a real issue. I think that the space that we have back there for what it is, is, I think, acceptable. In a perfect world, I would love to see an office that was dedicated to City Hall. In a perfect world, I would love to see an office that was dedicated to city council, but I don't get to redesign this building. If I did, I would certainly make it so that the summer we weren't minded for 30 minutes of each meeting, but some of the sets. But, you know, living in a practical world, I appreciate that we have other meeting spaces that we can use here, and it requires some scheduling, and that's, you know, there's also areas we can reserve, the public library, we have a senior community center. So, I guess that some of these things, if we can work some of this out between staff and the council, that's fine, but this is not an issue that I feel indebted to make action on.
Anything else?
As well. You work with what you have. Got an office out there that has a lot of wheels under it, and it's got a lot of paperwork in it, too. It's got all my billing in there, it's got all my load tickets in there, it's got my personal paperwork in there, and I think as a city hall, or as a city council member, you can use a space in here that is allowed, or you can use a space at home, or you can use, as Jim says, a space at a coffee shop. And it seems having an office in here would be kind of heavy-handed towards certain individuals, and I'm not comfortable with that. And I think that, you know, if we need something, there is there to provide it, there is to provide it. It's, you know, not to smash up a bunch of staff time to do that, but if there is something that we do need that's of importance, they are there to help us get that. And if not, I'm sure that Lindsay can find it on his computer and show it to another tenant. So, I'm not in favor of an office in here, and, you know, I think that's great. The SWIM city council does have an office. They also have a city hall that is substantially newer than ours. And I'm not into remodeling city hall by any means to come up with that kind of space.
All right, it sounds like we've got an answer there. There is no need for an office and no need for service space. Is that correct?
Well, I see service space as different than access to the internal network of, like, if you want, if you want space to, I mean, I think we could create a Google Suite, use a G-Drive for council if we wanted to store things. I appreciate the idea that there are documents that would be nice to maintain, not necessarily in perpetuity, but certainly as a handoff and having a place to put those where there's some backup is a nice idea. Service space, if that's something that is available, I think, might be kind of nice. But I feel like that's different than, here's your drive, you can go into your folder and the council folder and file folders or whatever, but I don't think we want that to equate to access to public works, community and economic development and all that. So, I see that as also a different conversation than access to documents like the agenda, which is a living document being created somewhere in the city system versus a dedicated space for us to put, this was a, some, these were some notes I took at a really important meeting, and I want to make sure they're saved somewhere besides my hard drive because I want to make sure that other people can see them next year when they go, jeez, remember when we had that meeting and Sissy took notes? That makes sense to me, and I feel like that's also different than the other part of the computer piece that we were talking about earlier.
I just like to mention, each mayor is for a two-year term, and each mayor has their own personality. We are assigned to run the meetings, read the proclamations, and be a liaison with the community, and we all put our own stamp on being mayor. Mayor DeJulio ran an official meeting. I mean, he was good at that, and that's what he focused on. My focus was liaison with the community. I do remember as council members, I think a former mayor, DeJulio, wanted us to all have computers so we could all have better access. Sissy, you blew us all out of the water. You were so farther advanced than the rest of us. We had one council member that didn't even want to open his computer, turned it back in the first day. But, so, every mayor is different, but I, as mayor, I always had whatever I needed when I went to staff and said, you know, the dog ate my proclamation, I need a new one, and bingo, I, you know, I had a new one. Well, it was just on a, actually, on a Saturday, I was to read the proclamation someplace, and I couldn't find it, and I actually had a staff member came in and actually produced it for me. She was wonderful. But I've always had whatever I needed whenever I needed it, but every two years, we have a new mayor, so I wouldn't, will even, not ready to make major changes because any year, someone else may have a different focus. But I appreciate staff always providing conference rooms for us, and whatever information I've requested, 100% is right there. And I really thank you, staff, for being on the ball and taking care of us.
All right. Thank you.
Council, if I can just say, it is important that we have a lot of work to do relative to our public records, and there's probably a lot more to do on that issue, but I think it's important for council and members of the public to be aware that we do have access via our laser feature system directly online on the internet, and that is something that I frequently use. When I need a record, I go to the online tool to actually pull up any resolution that's been passed by council, any ordinance that's been passed by council. It effectively is the exact same system that staff uses to pull up those documents, and I want to make sure the public does, those records are accessible. We probably have quite a bit of catch-up work to do to make sure that those records are fully populated. I think, too, it's important that we have work to do relative to the agenda and predictability on the agenda. I think it really is important that the mayor be involved with preparing the agenda and looking ahead to future agendas, and I think that's something we talked about at retreat that we will be working on, putting together a calendar of agenda items that really reflects our strategic plan or work plan ultimately, and I look forward to working with council and getting that approved of, ma'am.
Thank you. All right. Can we go, let's move on to the think tank discussions. I have a couple of things that I want to add, I guess, regarding this, the think tank discussions. And the first one was actually really disturbing to hear from a lot of the public that some of our think tank discussions have been, I guess, misrepresented, that they are things that the council wants, and why then is that going not the case? And then, I mean, I'm talking about the Udo designs as to downtown, using those shipping containers that I brought up, because he had emailed me twice. It was an idea on how to get some of the activity downtown. So, I brought it in, had the think tank for food, for creativity, and just to spark more conversation about what could be used. In some communities, shipping containers have been used for multiple purposes, but this council, it was brought up as a think tank idea. It is not something that the whole council agreed to do at all. It was actually never brought up. It was never decided to bring it up to the full council. But I've been hearing out in the community that, gosh, look at this, isn't it terrible? All the things that council wants to put forth, and this is one of them. And so, I just, I am really disappointed that a think tank idea that was just used for creative food for us to think, potentially think outside the box, has been, is being misused to go ahead and just, I guess, look, I guess, talk down to the, you know, discourage the council. So, I just wanted to tell people to, you know, please be careful with what you're saying, especially if it's coming out of the think tank idea. We, I believe that no idea is a bad idea when you're just brainstorming. It just really is just a brainstorm, so please take it in that light.
Just to speak briefly to that, this is, I think, one of the dangers of just having brainstorm in public, in public meetings, and I still think it's worth it. You know, there are times in which we'll have ideas, they turn out to be bad ideas, or, you know, ideas that we just decide not to pursue, and people get the wrong impression of what are actually less. So, you know, that's something that's hard for us to have thick skin regarding a lot of these things, and I share that, you know, and I had, that's something that's hard for me sometimes where I'll propose something, I get misrepresented. And so, you know, I think that one of the critical things is just, if we don't like an idea, just to say we don't like the idea, and I, you know, for, I didn't like a shipping container idea, that's just me. Other ideas are, you know, are different, but I still think it's worth having those conversations. I still think that, you know, this is just something that we as public officials get from time to time, and that's unfortunate, but we can.
No, I remember, like I said, the food for thought, I don't care if it's a my guess. It's just another thing out. There's many out there, so. Anyway, all right, so, and I think you wanted to bring up the main federal tax exemption.
Sure. So, this is something that came up a long time ago when we were doing research on housing opportunities. And something that I brought up in a previous think tank discussion was a vacant property registration ordinance or a foreclosure registration ordinance. And, you know, we had a long discussion about that at the think tank. It was a really good discussion where there were points made on both sides, and there was clarification, a lot of good questions. And, you know, that represents one tool that we can use when we talk about the struggles that we have with regarding development of old vacant blighted properties. And we've got a lot of old buildings in our town, especially the young town, that's all something on my mind, so I like to talk about all those tools. So, that's one tool that we can use to kind of say, hey, there's this behavior that could be harmful, let's try to create some boundaries around the behavior to reduce the harm. Another kind of tool that we have is incentives for good things. And so, I want to make sure that we talk about both sides, and we don't just want to say, we're here to tell people what we don't like. We're also here to just tell people, hey, this is what we do like, and we want to give you incentives to do it. And that's what I think this is a really great example of. There's a good discussion of this on the MRSC website, and it's RCW 84.14. It's been brought up multiple times in public by one of our regular attendees, and this is also something that Fort Townsend just passed, I think, earlier.
Could you repeat the RCW?
RCW 84.14. And so, under that RCW, Washington City, with a population of 15,000 or more, may establish a tax exemption program to stimulate the construction of new rehabilitated or converted multifamily housing within designated areas. And this can also improve affordable housing. So, Fort Townsend, I believe, earlier this year, August and summer sometime, passed a 12-year multifamily tax exemption program. So, basically, if people build multifamily housing in certain designated areas, they don't have to pay certain property taxes on that construction for a certain amount of time. And this is something I think that we, I think that even in city staff, there's workers' idea, and I don't want to speak for them, of course, but there are certain decisions that we would have to make on a policy level as a council, meaning, do we want to require that some percentage of those units are low to moderate in your households? Do we want to have an eight-year tax exemption or a 12-year tax exemption? What is the minimum number of units that we would want to have in those housing, multifamily housing projects, developments, whatever you would call them? And what area designation in our city would we want to say, here's where we want multifamily housing to be incentivized?
Mayor of the area council, if I may, if I may, help for council to, many of you already are aware that the vast majority of council members have emphasized that this is a valuable item to move forward, and for that reason, this task is going to be assigned to the legal department, and Bill Boras already begun drafting the documents necessary to implement multifamily housing tax credit. I think those are great questions to ask, I think, if, if staff have a recommendation, I think we would certainly like to see both the eight and the 12-year approach so that we have both of those implemented. I think there are different ways of doing that. Both Allison and, Allison Recky and Bill Boras are quite familiar with that exemption, and we've seen it applied with our communities, and I think we have some good suggestions and recommendations. My hope would be that we're bringing to you and run this in the area in the future to see that move forward.
That's awesome. Can I, wanted to, I know that I pulled out the Fort Townsend one, it's, the date for their meeting was on the 6th, 2018, and so it's in their agenda, this was the draft version, not the version that they passed, but I know that it was feeling with the version that they passed that was a little too limited, but anyway, so that's reasonable. But if you're right about selecting the area and, you know, what, whether it's RS, 9 or 12, or, you know, what, I guess we have to, we have to decide, I guess, when you guys bring us that forth, the areas can be identified so we can take a look at them.
I just wanted to make sure, it perfectly appears that this is a tax exemption and not a stormwater exemption. There seems to be a little confusion on that, those stormwater regulations, and by the way, I want to, again, publicly commend the staff of the work on the comment section on the stormwater. I sat through that three-hour Department of Ecology meeting by Tom, and it was educational. But, but again, I think, Mike, this is a great idea, and I fully support it. I wish it carried over the stormwater, but it doesn't. And so, we must, you know, really be clear that it doesn't exempt from everything, just the tax part of it. So, again, I wish it did, but it don't.
Mayor of the council, I wanted to add one more relative to the boundaries. Staff in general feels that there might be a nexus relative to the animal coast opportunity zone. If we have similar boundaries, it can be a pretty powerful incentive package if you build those two together, and so likely will propose something that moves in that direction with the ability to add on additional areas later if so needed or so desired by council.
That'd be wonderful.
Yeah, I really feel like this is a really good tool that we would be aware of in not, at least really truly digging into exploring using it, and it sounds like there's no reason that we can't use it, and I hope that we make some good decisions about how to use it well, and I really, I like the idea of tying it in with the opportunity zone to potentially increase the opportunity that it provides.
And then, I think the other piece of that puzzle is zoning, making sure that we have appropriate, you know, and I think that, I think, I don't think that this is going to be a huge issue, I do think that these are things that our staff is thinking about, but, you know, we're thinking about how do we create kind of the opportunities for our neighborhoods to slowly increase in density, so they don't have a big shock to the neighborhood that changes compared to the neighborhood, but we make sure that there are these opportunities if someone's building these kind of, you know, multifamily units to slowly increase the density so that, you know, we get those bonuses that we kind of all understand that, you know, we can create more affordable neighborhoods, we can create, you know, a better tax base if we build a little more density. And I think that's one of the issues that I have with the city, I have a better zoning map, but I see a lot of single-family house residences, neighborhoods, and so I think this is a really good tool to kind of, we get a lot of wins with one policy. But I just wanted this to be on council mind, as it's going to probably come before us in the near future to think about, my preference, I'll just say, is I want a very open exemption, so we don't put a lot of restrictions, we, you know, I do think that that stormwater thing is, that's something we don't have a lot of control over. We can have more control over policies like this to make it more available to more development in more places. The animal coast type is just really genius, I'm really impressed by that. So, I just wanted this to be on council mind so we can hear our own research so that we're ready for that debate. No question.
One thing that also crosses my mind while we're sitting here is when we're thinking about what areas we want to put this in, I think we've spent some time, both in think tank and individually outside of meetings, and even probably in some meetings, talking about, you know, we have lots of high-density housing out on the fringes, which isn't necessarily where we want it, so I think, you know, thinking that you've already brought up density, but the other piece of it is, I think, to think about where we're putting it as it relates to transportation options and making sure that, so I guess what I'm asking is, when it comes to us, if we could have some, make sure that we're including in the conversation about where these are going, is it some place that could be accessible by transit, will never be accessible by transit, is already accessible by transit, meaning cloud transit when I say that? And that we also think about it in the context of what kind of parking we're going to require or not parking or any of that. I just, I think, as we talk about increasing population and wanting to build our I just, I think, as we talk about increasing population and, and wanting to build our, uh, workforce and therefore needing more housing, we also need to think about where all those people are going to put their vehicles if everybody has one. And let's maybe create some high-density housing that, um, would allow people to operate fairly well within the city without a car.
You guys want to chime in?
No. I've seen this work in other cities to develop under economically challenged areas. It works.
Okay. So this was looking forward and so I'm grateful to see that. Um, I know that, and Lindsay's now here, so we can hold off on this debate. He was talking about, um, the, the minimums and maximum setbacks. I know that they've adjusted and so, you know, to see whether this is going to help some of the development issues that we're having as well. So we'll, we'll put that on for a while. Um, so yes, is there anything else, um, worth thinking?
I just want to throw out an idea that, um, I'm so grateful for our council's support for the Eighth Street Bridges. It's been so successful. Everyone feels, uh, a sense of relief and a sense of pride when you ride across the bridges now. They're attractive and it, we just, it's just changed the whole dynamic of that experience for all of us. And so I believe they're much safer. But, um, what I would like to do is, is I would like to do some research that the state minimum, um, fencing is four feet, six inches. And our, our Eighth Street Bridges were built to, uh, fencing was built to state minimum. And all across the world, all across the country, all across the state, people are retrofitting, refitting the fencing for safety fencing. Um, and so it just seems to me logically that, uh, I would like to approach our state legislators with asking for a higher minimum fencing to begin with. We can change that four foot six to a higher. And I would just like to do some research with, with Public Works and, and maybe come back to council on a later date with some, um, a new idea for higher safety fencing to, to initially be built on fences and see if this council could perhaps be, show some leadership in, in promoting higher safety fencing that would save lives, save money, save time, and enhance communities. Um, it just seems like it's more efficient all the way around. So if I get some, so may I do some research and come back with some information?
Okay. Yeah, I would say that to make sure that you have option because that, um, that height is opaque if there is a drop less than a certain amount. And, yeah, but so for any drops that are higher than whatever.
And over highways, it's still all four feet, six inches. You know, a hundred feet or over highway. But I thought, wow, it didn't work for us. It doesn't work with a lot of people, so maybe we can just look into alternatives. So thank you all.
I'd like to be saying to municipalities, you might have credit for their work.
Yes. It is. It's, it's much more so. If I'd, I'd like to bring you back some information for further discussion. Anything else? Thank you.
Um, leadership, I wanted to let y'all know that, um, Governor Inslee is talking about potentially getting rid of banks all over Washington and we have done it before. It becomes a statewide requirement. I thought that was great. Um, so, um, nothing else for think tank? Again, um, we're going to edit this as a piece of the agenda so that, you know, so that think tanks will not happen here. We'll try to take a small number of items, um, during all of our meetings so that we can all be involved, um, during these think tanks. So that's, that's what's happening with it. All right. So we will continue with other considerations, the, uh, certification of sound agreement. Mr. West.
Madam Mayor, Council, uh, over the portion of the last three years, the city has conducted a number of investigations and will address a number of complaints regarding personnel issues in our light operations division. Uh, one of these issues resulted in a tort claim against the city of Port Angeles based on allegations regarding behavior and actions that occurred in this division. Uh, the city in the claim had both felt that it was in the best interest of both parties to try dynamically resolve the matter, uh, through mediation. Uh, and we have done that. We have mediated the issue and at this point, um, the city would recommend that we settle with the light operations employee for a dollar and a hundred fifty thousand. Two hundred thousand of that would come from the WCIA, Washington City's Insurance Association, and a buck, and fifty thousand of it would come from the city of Port Angeles. I think it's important with this act, action, uh, is my expectation that the city will finally be moving past some of these investigations and particularly those associated issues. And in doing so, we have and we will continue to make clear our expectations regarding culture, behavior, accountability for individual actions in that division. I think due to the savings that we have seen in personnel vacancies within that division, it's important for ratepayers to know that there will be no impact to our local ratepayers because we can't afford it within our existing twenty eighteen budget. I hope that's helpful to council. Again, we're asking for you to modify that settlement here for the seat.
Madam Council, any further discussion on that?
I move that we approve adoption of RFI assignment, which I'm going to put in twenty eighteen with a amount of two hundred thousand dollars, which the city contributes fifty thousand dollars, um, of the continuing costs of action alleged by employee of the city's electric division against the city.
All right. So we've got a motion on the table. I need a second.
Second.
Okay, and a second. Any further discussion regarding this?
So, you know, to me, this is somewhat of a distasteful, um, thing that we're doing. A lot of this predates my tenure, of course, as a city council person. Um, but, you know, I feel like my responsibility is to mitigate the risk that we have as a city. I appreciate the comments that our city manager made. And, um, I, I think this is, you know, just like with most elements, nobody's happy, but everybody, uh, gives a little, gets a little bit of its own. Um, I do appreciate the focus going forward on a workplace that is professional and safe for all employees.
Yeah, I would completely agree with you. So, um, any further comments? All right. We have the motion on the table and a second. Um, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Pass it to Lindsay. All right. And the last item with other considerations is a letter to the governor. Um, so, uh, Lou Brown's email, we ended, I guess we called back and forth about the support for the capital budget request that Peninsula College has, or their advanced technology center, um, the budget, uh, request for that item is two point one million and Peninsula College right now is on that list. They are number forty-one out of forty-three total items. So, um, so he wanted to meet, let's say, to draft a letter that gets submitted to, um, the governor. So let me read it. She was, it's stated right now. So, uh, "Dear Governor Inslee, the support for the Peninsula College capital request as Mayor of Port Angeles, I want to convey the full and enthusiastic support from the city council for funding for Peninsula College's budget request for its advanced technology center. This project is listed by the Washington State Board of Community, that is Community and Technical Colleges in the capital request and will bring a critical construction project to our community. This project represents a new state ER facility that will enhance our working, our workforce training programs in our rural community when we see impactful shortages of qualified employees in various technical professions. Both our economy and our housing shortages need the support of our community college to help us remove barriers to self-sufficiency and unemployment. We thank you for your service and your support of our community needs." Considerate, and then kind of sign that letter. And unless anybody wants to modify the every change that, uh, staff, like, so this is a draft, just like taught after the press this afternoon, um, that can easily be modified.
I appreciate the opportunity for us to support Peninsula College and it's been an incredible partner in economic development or workforce development. I'm a proud graduate of Peninsula College and the experiences that I had there in our start program were, you know, amazing, really similar to my development as an adult. Um, and, you know, the amount of improvements that have happened since I graduated are just really incredibly impressive. And so anything we can do to support them in improving the college further, improving our city further, I fully support.
Um, to a group of side members.
I just think we should always be behind our remarkable Peninsula College. We are so fortunate to have such a high-quality, um, college in our town, right in Port Angeles, with millions and millions of dollars in buildings and equipment and training. Uh, we're very fortunate. I absolutely support this and I'm grateful to have the opportunity to support an advanced technology center. Oh, I can hardly wait for the weekend.
Um, I just wanted to disclose, it came up last time, but for the record, that I do work at Peninsula College, I would not be impacted by this, uh, building. Um, but, uh, not directly from a financial standpoint. I am on the Workforce Development Committee of the college and, um, we haven't talked about this specifically in, I'm in a couple meetings, so they might have, but, um, but I think, um, the school is really dedicated to working with local employers to figure out what's needed. Can they, can they develop something that will, will impact directly? So an example is a limited, they have a limited welding program which directly translates to employment at Armstrong Marine. Um, and, and I think there just really is a focus on community building, uh, not just on, they don't just, they're not just doing this work because they want students, they're doing this work because they want to be good partners in a community and, and work with the community to help, um, create employable people for jobs that are sitting open. And so, um, I also think it's great that we have the opportunities to support that.
Any further discussion?
To support this, I also graduated from Peninsula College and I go up there now and I'm not sure where I'm at really. Although I participated several years back in removing several of those buildings. But, uh, any type of education that supports our workforce and increases the ability of our workforce to possibly increase their income, make their lives better, make the lives of their employers better, is something that we need to support as a city council. And that's part of our economic development and that college is a big driver of folks being able to go to school and afford it. And I have a senior in high school that wants to go off to college and, whoa. Affordability is definitely an eye-opener when you look at being able to support our local college versus being able to support, um, some other places that would look bad.
All right, folks, so then, um, I guess, uh, I don't think I need an emotion. Just was, you guys are okay with me signing this letter?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good letter.
So, um, we're done. We don't have any time left for purchasing, so we move on to council reports. That's number ten.
Start, start somewhere else.
We can go back.
See, went to the UAC. Um, I'm just going to say that was quite the show. That is the first one I've attended and I'm just the alternate and Lindsay is someplace else. So, um, it wasn't something I was going to chime in on, some particular items that seemed to be underlying the background that maybe Kate could go on. The other one was the solid waste advisory. And we are in the midst of getting ready to start our comprehensive plan. And that's something that, uh, the state showed up to and we discussed with them kind of funding for that and getting on the governor's radar for funding on that and, uh, moving forward with the county also. And, uh, I find it, you know, I asked the question, how are most of these garbage dumps that, most of these landfills? And the city of Port Angeles is fairly rare in that they are the holder of what was a landfill that is also a transfer station, when most of these things are run by the county. Well, they're, they're owned by the county, but they're ran by other solid waste handlers. And I just thought it was interesting that, um, the city had the liability and the, uh, and the ownership of such a facility.
So, let's see. We had a budget retreat for, was that before the last meeting? Jesus. Okay. Anyway, um, cloud transit, uh, working on the budget and, um, some other exciting things there. Um, the main thing I want to highlight is, um, that last Saturday, um, my younger son and I participated in the first Port Angeles cranksgiving. Um, it was the twentieth anniversary of cranksgiving as a crank and then the end of Thanksgiving, cranksgiving. Um, so this is a national program that municipalities participated. SWIM has been doing theirs for about ten years now, I think. Um, so, um, it was the first year for Port Angeles and the idea is that, well, what we did is we met the farmer's market on our bikes. We got a list of wants from the food bank and then we had to write around the prizes for going to all of the establishments that participated. So we rode from the farmer's market to McPhee's, over to SARS, down to Safeway, and then we took our fully loaded trailers on the back of our bikes down to Safeway, which was not very fun because my trailer came loose and tried to skip past my bike because, um, we had collected a hundred twenty-eight pounds of food. Not just Ben and I, but we worked with, uh, another mom and Chad from his class. Um, so we won, he was very pleased because, uh, we won the team that could be one first prize for being the team that collected the most food. So they collected a little over five hundred pounds of food for the food bank and also, um, I think about a hundred dollars in tokens for the food bank, which is great because what the food bank does for, with market tokens, when the, when someone gets their token at the food bank, if they have SNAP, um, when they go to the food bank, their five-dollar token becomes set worth seven dollars. So it's really an added bonus, um, for the food bank to get those donated. Um, and I think the part that really impressed Ben the most was that, um, the, bringing up Peninsula College and the welding program there made all of the trophies out of bike parts. And so we have this massive trophy that's all made of gears, um, different bike gears and then a couple of spokes to hold it together. Um, and then the can with this sort of certificate sits on the top and it's currently sitting on our piano. He was pretty sure I shouldn't bring it here tonight to show you because he was afraid it would get broken. So, um, but I encourage you all to be about participating next year. It was really fun and some good exercise on a very beautiful sunny day.
Okay, let's see here. Um, I also attended the Comtransit Board meeting as an alternate and, you know, I also previously, I talked about the budget workshop at our last council meeting. I was just looking at my notes and I was really disappointed. I got to go to two Comtransit Board meetings and Steve wasn't in either one. Um, but we had a really discussion, we had an interesting discussion about the Board of Composition of Comtransit Service, which since it's an option before I was born, the board is also considered, consisted of two members from each municipality of City of Fox, the SWIM, City of Port Angeles, and Compton County. And we had a discussion about, do we want to change that? Why? And, you know, uh, one of the interesting things was that our council can kind of, we were a lot of two slots. We can do whatever we want with that. We don't have to have two people in alter. We can rotate council members, good. If we all want to be more involved, or if we have three people that want to be involved, they can take turns. Uh, so it was really interesting, kind of odd discussion we had, but, um, their board meeting, you know, was a really interesting experience and I enjoyed it a lot. Um, uh, let's see here. I also attended Port Angeles County Association meeting and a Chamber of Commerce Board meeting. Uh, the Chamber of Commerce is always just doing so much. I appreciate that there's been some ups along the road with regards to city current, that city staff has worked really hard to, you know, smooth it out. I'm not sure what all the, all the decisions are, but that's been a great, a big lift for the Chamber of Commerce, and so I hope people go out and skate. And I was also at one of our community cafe meetings that has been put on, it's just like a really great group, focused on outreach and education regarding average childhood experiences, you know, these traumas that children often experience that have real health outcomes later in life. And it was really well-attended, it was a really engaged group, and they're focused on actions and results. And it was a real positive, optimistic moment, that they're talking about a lot of issues, they've kind of pulled beyond four different big, petri dishes, and I think they've done a really good job of pointing out some places where we do need some change in our community. One was a center for teams of some sort, whether that's a public thing or a private thing or a business. And so there's some really interesting ideas there and I really, I try to, I'm going to have more meetings, I've said this, most of them before, so I think that was it.
Jim?
I get to learn how to drive a Land Monee tomorrow.
Awesome.
Oh, wow, that's great. Is that one of you?
I know, I feel like a little bird in a pen's cart on the bird bath. It's been an interesting couple of weeks. I personally would like, I'd just start out by thanking Chief Smith, Brian Smith and Carl Hatton, is it, is, they made a great contribution for me to ride along, if you will, with PennCom, the 911 emergency call center. If you haven't had the opportunity to do that, I would strongly recommend that you do. These people are absolutely amazing. I call them the quiet professionals and that really doesn't describe the skills exhibited by them. It was truly amazing to watch them work. They're taking the concept of multitasking to a new level. It is just amazing. And the patience that they exhibited on several calls, when they get people under, you know, stressful situations and how they commonly go about their business and, and it was a remarkable experience and an education on my part. And I thank Chief Smith and Carl and especially the young man that I sat with that night, that was very patient with the concealing questions I had, his name is Kyle. And again, I would encourage you all, if you have the opportunity, to just watch these quiet professionals at work, it's, it's amazing. We don't hear much about them, but they're behind the scenes and they, they keep us safe and they're remarkable in the work they do. So I really, really appreciated the opportunity to do that, I would like to do it again. I did go through the little shop of horrors, Mike, and it was, these kids just blow me away. The talent exhibited by our high school students was amazing. And there was just a fun, fun evening and talking about communications technology, the communications technology department of the high school did all the technology work, the microphones, the sound system and stuff like that. One of the, one of the parts of that program is theater production. So these kids will be going on either at Peninsula College or onto careers in theater production, along with broadcast journalism and so, but, boy, I tell you, what a great job, what a great time. Feed me, feed. We went to the Veterans Day ceremony at the Coast Guard Station, that was extremely well-done and very moving. And it was probably 1,500-plus people there in that old hangar and a lot of, not a lot, because there aren't a lot anymore, but a number of WWII veterans were in attendance and got special recognition. And it was just a beautiful day and Coast Guard did just a marvelous job as they do each year, but the music, my hats off to the choirs that sang and the band and it was a date that was, was just a, Sherry was just a great time and what a tribute and I appreciate that. Mayor, how do you, is it birch? Oh, bro, that's right. The reason I say that is because, since you and I went to the Sea Scout ceremony on Sunday night, their planning ceremony, our Sea Scout crew, Martin Shields' chapter of Sea Sports had their planning ceremony on, on Sunday night and it was a real pleasure and honor to meet the widow of Martin Shields and very, very gracious and lovely person. I got to visit with her briefly and, but my congratulations to the Sea Sports, they're growing, they're, got one year under their belt, they've got a number of what they call planning owners, these are the kids that finished their first year. And so I would like to congratulate them, but this poor young lady had the most difficult time with names.
Just very briefly, I wanted to comment on the United States Coast Guard Station hosting our community for Veterans Day ceremonies. It was just inspirational and moving for everyone that was there. It was just quite spectacular. The, the security was pretty amazing, too. So, and then they had the, and they had refreshments for everyone. So my hats off to our Coast Guard friends for supporting the community and inviting us to have such a spectacular, wonderful Remembrance Day.
And so I was not able to go to that because I was invited, I spent, spent it in Canada and under a Remembrance Day with the mayor, Lisa Hels out there. And so that was also a very interesting experience, reading the wreath at their Centaf, which is right there in front of the castle. So it was just, it was really wonderful. And then I went to the NRC conference and this was a really interesting one because it's, it's all about our scientists, citizen scientists and all the projects that they do. But the orca whale was probably the top item that got the most attention because everything we do really deals with the clean water, anything that happens in the city that will affect the orcas. And so it was really interesting in seeing that a lot of those were saying, well, one of the things that we can do is we can actually leave the shenof salmon for the orca, we're getting other salmon, but just let's leave all the shenof salmon for the orca. So we need to also look at what's coming out of our sewage pipes because that's possibly killing the smell that feeds the fish that feeds the whale. So asking everybody, hey, be cautious of what you're putting down the drain because it's going into our, into the salmon. The other thing was that they talked about noise reduction, if we could work with a port and maybe with the Coast Guard Station and the Navy to see if they could slow down to, you know, so that noise production goes down so that it affects the whales less. And they talked also about, a lot of the whale watchers, some of those folks are saying that the resident orcas are just a very small part of their business and so some of them are voluntarily not going to be watching out for, you know, watching the, our resident whales, they're going to go, you know, the other Yankee whales and others who are available. So that's giving them a little more space, which I think is actually very nice of them. And one of the things that was brought up is, you know, if we don't do anything, our children's children may not see whales, you know, in the salish sea. So this is something that no inaction is, has a price to it. So one of the things that they, that has just come out, it came out probably, I think it was two days ago, the Orca Task Force came out with 36 recommendations and I think four, five of those actually apply to local governments. And they are to apply and enforce laws that protect habitat, reduce stormwater threats and accelerate cleanup of toxins that are harmful to the orcas, improve the effectiveness implementation and enforcement of National Food and Discharge Elimination Systems requirements to address direct threats to the southern resident orcas of the prey, increase monitoring of toxic substances in marine waters, create and deploy adaptive management strategies to reduce threats to orcas and their prey, and to try and provide sustainable funding for implementation of our recommendations. So like I said, those are the ones that we probably have some control over. Anyway, that was, I think we all are going to have to need to work on this if we want to see the resident orcas survive. The second thing is, or the third thing is, the Commonwealth County Co-Working Space that's ready to go see, to visit, Port Angeles now has a co-working space that is open for business and I thought they did a really great job of that. And just wanted to give an update that the Housing Task Force will meet December 11th, right?
Correct, at 1:00 AM.
At 1:00 AM. And that is my report. So, Madam Mayor, may I, I forgot to inform the council that Corey Delcott and I and Chief Smith will be, had a very preliminary discussion with some veterans, veterans group about, just some initial discussion about moving forward on some positive solutions to the Veterans Memorial Park. And we will bring back further information to you as the discussion develops then. Then I know there are other council members that will want to get involved, but right now it's just the very beginning preliminary discussion. And now we can help if we have to Thanksgiving.
Wonderful, thank you. And I guess that reminds me as well, it was brought up that we probably do need a policy on tree homes or at least have a discussion on what, what may be done or not done or what we would agree to do or how people, like I said, the idea was that some housing is including, some of the tents that are being taken out that are still currently being used, people having their medicines lost, I don't know if that's something that anybody has an interest in doing, but, you know, it's something that was brought up and I thought that maybe if we, maybe we can toss it in the thick of Thanksgiving, if anyone's coming. All right, so with that, we go to information, City Manager Report.
Madam Mayor, council, we do have a number of items on the, sorry, in the packet for your information. I want to add a couple items for your information as well. I do want to apologize that I did not get any information that's followed up to the retreat, that I think is really important, we have to follow up the sessions relative to the retreat. I said we didn't have time to get to that prior to this meeting, so I apologize, but I'll be working with Mayor Brook to make sure that we move some of those items forward at hopefully your next meeting and future meetings as well. I do think it's important to share with council, we did have an individual who was representing a hotel on our voting test committee, who went over to that hotel, we didn't even know from the hotel indicating that the deal of you representing them on the committee, we did put that out for advertisement, we did get two applicants. And as such, per policy, we typically would do an ad hoc committee approach to appoint that, recognizing that we have only a limited amount of time until February for the constituent of the city. My recommendation to council, and if you're okay with it, in order to the injection we'll simply before, would be to go with the ad hoc committee that already sacrificed this year to select from the council or from the committee applicants that were chosen previously. Those council members are Mayor Brook, Michael Mayer, and Mr. Willie Short Warren. And we would just put that ad hoc committee together again to look at the two applicants that we currently have, give that pillow prior to the next meeting and move forward. We have to be bringing that hopefully forward on December 4th. Additionally, I wanted to mention that on December 7th, council has a strategic planning retreat that will take place from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. The draft agenda for that strategic planning retreat is going to be put together by the facilitator Casey Reeder. It is in your packet tonight, we greatly appreciate council input on that agenda. If there's changes that you desire or other things that you wanted to incorporate in that retreat, please do let staff know. I want to express appreciation to city staff from the legal department, public works department, community economic development department for their diligent work on putting together comments on NPDS, National Food and Discharge Elimination Systems, Stormwater Program changes both in the manual and the permit itself that's extended to the city of Port Angeles. I think it's so important that the city takes their role as a steward of the environment very seriously. We very much want to protect our local waters, treat our stormwater correctly, but we also think it's important, ecology recognize, we are a very unique jurisdiction and our one-size-fits-all approach across Washington State is inappropriate and we will, council have an opportunity to digest and read some of those comments, but there was a lot of work that went into those comments and we really appreciate those staff. And finally, just wanted to say happy Thanksgiving to council and really appreciate your time of seeing.
Thank you. And I did have a question on the Tree City USA, I know that the report was there and it looks like we are not going to be able to make it this year, so, but there was a couple of things that said that we lacked and I wondered, since we had already been in Tree City USA, do we lack it because there was a change of staff, do we lack, and like I said, I know we used to be, but now we are not going to be able to.
Yes, I can answer that question. So it is certainly the intent to get an application by the number of hearing dates. So we are intending to, to afford with the official application process, we received information from that department, the processes of applications, that they're very excited to see our application again and plans to support us. But the items that we are missing are actually just that, that's, has, has housed in at all times, but they still are able to support us due to the other things that need their price figure out.
Great, thank you for that.
Madam Mayor, I think, I think the important distinction that might, you may have noted in the memo, is the distinction that we're particularly missing things relative to the Tree City Line USA relative to our utility. And you may remember that's something that council member Sherman Warren brought up and there's a number of criteria that we are missing that we would have to invest in from a resource perspective if we were able to apply there, but I don't believe there's any concerns with our Tree City USA application, just to clarify.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate that clarification because that didn't come through when I read it, so. And have we, will we apply to the tree line, just hoping that they're okay with the, the examples?
I think at this point, we would have to make a pretty substantial additional resource contribution if we were going to meet those eligibility requirements.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Just, just real quick, Nate, do you have a venue for the strategic planning?
I apologize, we do not. We, there were some challenges with the last venue as well as we've explored some other ones and there's been challenges with those, so it is still a work in progress, but hopefully we'll have-
I know where you can rent some conference rooms in, in the building. Thank you.
All right, so seeing our comments, I know we're at the second public comment period of the night, so if there's anybody in the audience who would like to come and speak to the council, please.
Hi, I'm Andrew Carney, I'm of resident of Port Angeles. I just do respond to what you said, Mayor Brook, about what we should do about the homeless, because sometime at the beginning of this next year, we're going to put on a training, it's going to be a manager training, so individuals can become companions with individuals who are homeless. And perhaps if they have a problem, they will have a member of the greater community that they can go to and say, look, this is happening to be somebody who they trust.
Thank you. Anything else in the audience who would like to bring anything up at all? All right, that is for that. We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming, appreciate it. Yes, happy, happy Thanksgiving.